Township of Precipity Troy Hills, annual organization meeting of the Township Council, January 5th, 2016. Please rise for the flag salute. Mr. Valori, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Corrifi.
Here.
Mr. Di Piero.
Here.
Mrs. Greg Nanny.
Present.
Mr. Paluso.
Present.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present: Mayor James R. Barberio, Ellen M. Sandman, Business Administrator, John Anglaccino, Esquire Township Attorney, Ann M. Cucci, CFO, Nora Jolie, Register.
Statement of compliance, adequate notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 17th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 22nd, 2015, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 24th, 2015, and was forwarded by fax to all local newspapers and local radio stations on December 17th, 2015. No council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock a.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Upcoming meetings, tonight immediately following our organization meeting will be our agenda meeting, and on January 19th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m. will be our regular meeting. Okay, moving on to appointments. At this time, I'd like to nominate Councilman Valori for Council President.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Greg Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
I have a present for the Council President. Here you go. I spared no expense in wrapping it up.
Thank you very, very much.
You can open it up, so they'll see what it is.
Okay, great.
I think this is important if you watch any television and you watch...
Paul, do you want to open it for me?
If you watch commercials.
Should we all duck?
No, 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 it'll be fine.
Oh, I like this.
You know the commercial where somebody gets... We get... Yes, we get a little...
Thank you very much.
So this'll keep us all calm. We got a big enough snicker bar that everybody... This is starting the new year off right.
And I promise we will stay calm.
That's right. So with that snicker bar, you should...
I'll leave that right there. Thank you, Paul. I think you did very well. Thank you. That was good.
Good.
Let me make a switch. Take your snicker bars.
Yes. Move that right over there.
Keep it close to him.
Ellen, you never surprise me. Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues in the administration for obviously supporting me up here, and I promise you all that I'll give 110% in my duties as a council president. And I just have a quick few words I want to say, because I think it's going to cover a lot of things that we accomplished, and it includes everyone that's up here, and hopefully we can move forward in 2016 and do great things for the town. So, Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for being here. I want to start off by thanking the council for instilling its faith and confidence in me to lead the government body in good faith while tackling the tough issues, you know, the tough issues that face this town. When I was elected to council two years ago, I promised Precipity residents I would work to deliver on accountability in municipal government, rein in on municipal spending and property tax hikes, promote business and partnership, and improve township services. In the time which I served on the council, we, as a council, along with the mayor, have made great progress in these measures. The first one that I'd like to mention, you know, we cut the budget by $2.2 million over the past two years without any layoffs to the township employees nor any negative impact on the services. We increased the number of police officers patrolling our streets from about 87 to 101 officers. This will help provide our residents with increased safety and security and enhanced traffic enforcement throughout the township. Additionally, we lowered overtime costs in the Police Department for approximately about $200,000, and we all worked diligently on that to make it much more efficient with regards to the manpower and overtime. We provided our valuable blue collar workers fair and equitable contracts, which is long overdue, and fair to the taxpayers also. We focused on economic growth with the town being the corporate headquarters for GAF, which is on Route 10. UPS also located now their corporate headquarters. It will be their IT division, which will be coming soon to our town in the near future. CVS, along with other major companies, will equal in Precipity their home in the not-too-distant future. We also successfully fought to retain open space and work to keeping our parks prestigious, and we will soon have also a multipurpose field which will be coming to Smithfield soon. As much as we can celebrate the overall achievements, we will not rest on our laurels as more work remains. My dedication to lead the council to advance upon the accomplishments made thus far and work collaboratively with our valuable employees to improve the way the township does business will continue. For example, during my council meetings, I will make sure that the Chief Financial Officer and Business Administrator will provide a statutory report on all township utilities and departments. This will keep the council updated and provide transparency to the public. And I've already gone with the CFO and the BA, and we came up with some great ideas on how we're going to inform the public as to what's going on. So, we're hoping that we can be very transparent, and we can answer a lot of questions in advance, so we don't have to deal with a lot of Oprah requests. Some of the areas I want to focus on are legal bills. Our township budget and taxpayers have been burdened by the skyrocketing costs. However, I will work closely with our Chief Financial Officer and Business Administrator regarding all legal fees. Continued reform is alive and well, and I will now lead the council to embrace the ongoing change about more transparency, fiscal restraint, and accountability. These are critical responsibilities the council needs to aggressively take on to facilitate a better quality of life for our residents who we serve. Precipity taxpayers can trust that the council will continue to embark on its unwavering commitment not to give in to any special interest that seeks what is easy or popular or blindly pursue pass paths of least resistance, which makes absolutely no sense and have cost taxpayers too much money. To conclude, moving forward, starting today, I look forward working with my fellow council members, the mayor, and the administration to provide an efficient, effective, accountable government, and thank you, and God bless Precipity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
First of all, congratulations, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor.
I met with our Council President prior, and we have a commitment to each other and to the township. We're going to meet on a regular basis. We're going to go over a lot of stuff that's happened in town, happened that's going to happen in town. We're going to be cooperative. That being said, I do want to say, though, you know, we maintain our AAA bond rating, which is important, and a lot of things that happened last year in 2015, of course, just can't happen by itself, you know? I know sometimes you think we don't get along, but when we do get along, a lot of good things happen in town, like the Council President said, UPS, that's a major deal, that's a great deal. There's 26,000, 26 million square feet of office space in the county. We have 13 million of it, I mean, 26 million. We have 13 million of it. We're like the third-largest corporate center in the state of New Jersey. And I have to tell you, this year will probably be the first year in 10 years, 2015, there'll be no ratable loss.
Excrete.
We're definitely moving in the right direction. I do wanted to talk about the negotiations with the blue collars. I want to thank the council because, and I want to thank Ellen Sandman, I want to thank Ann Cucci. This was long in waiting. You know, these individuals work so hard for the township that, you know, it's really nice that you have a council that appreciates what they do for the township as well as the administration, as well as the police contract. Like Council President said, everybody got something out of it, but nobody really got hurt.
Yes.
The taxpayers did not get hurt in the whole process. We have a new super superintendent who I'm looking forward to working with, as well as Council President and the rest of the council. And we have a collection rate, which is just phenomenal, of 99.28%. That's phenomenal, to be totally honest. I really can't speak on the admin system, so Fanny, you like to speak on the admins. That's something that's going to be very important in the future for our budgets.
Yes.
Getting information, and detailed information that you're going to need.
Yes, we just installed that system finally in September, and we're working diligently to be able to provide quick and informative information for everyone, including the public and the council. The reporting is right on time, right online. We don't have to... In the old system, we had to call and ask for physical reports, and come the first of the year, the only way you could look up history was on a huge vat of paper. So that's no longer going to be happening. At least people will be able to get their information. So we're really excited about the new system. It is an ongoing process, but that, I think, is going to be great for the whole town and, of course, the council.
Thank you, Ann.
If I could, one of the things I'd like to address is that when we did this, we were... We talked about it, and the council and the mayor were all on board, and we said, you know, Precipity is not just all about dollars and cents, and I know that Davey's here today. And one of the things that we did, which was to give back to the community and make a difference, was we have in Precipity now a school, classes for Asperger, people with Asperger Syndrome, and that's a wonderful credit to the council and to the mayor and to this administration that says, you know, we give back because that's what a true person who is in government, to take the resources that we have and where we can provide for those folks. So, I'm very pleased about that. So that goes without saying. It's not just, again, about dollars and cents, which are very good. Another thing we did for our employees and for all was that we increased some medical benefits without any increase to the cost. We increased dental as well as some additional coverages for some prescription and things of that nature, so we're very, very pleased with that. The other things are that, you know, it... We can talk of, with regard to our core obligation, I know we're working diligently on putting that in proper order and making, doing the best we can in providing for the housing as well as providing that we keep Precipity Precipity and work together to make sure that we do our fair share, but that our fair share isn't beyond what is acceptable to the residents that live here, to the people that are here. So it's a nice balancing act, but I think we have the wherewithal, and we certainly have the people involved to make it happen, so I'm pleased to say that.
And in closing, Council President, I truly look forward to working with you. I think we're going to have a, you know, congenial atmosphere.
Absolutely.
I also want to thank all the other council members, Councilman DePiero, Councilman Paluso, Councilman Corrifi, and welcome aboard, Councilwoman Loretta Grignani.
We'll do great things here.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In regards to opening for Council Vice President, I'd like to nominate Councilman Paluso.
Thank you. I'll second.
That is the second by Councilman Corrifi. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Abstain, of course.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
You have a few words?
Yeah, I'll say a couple of words. I'll keep it brief. You know, as you know, as an elected, you know, official, you know, the important thing is to listen to our taxpayers, and one of the things that I'm proud of is that over the last two years, I've listened to a lot of the taxpayers, whether they're businesses, residents, or volunteer organizations. And one of the important things is that, you know, we discussed things about increasing revenue, holding the line on taxes, stabilizing our tax base, decreasing our debt, and we've effectively done that over the last two years. I'm very proud of those accomplishments. One of the important things to me that I'll share with you is the fact that when I was campaigning to become a councilman, I had distributed a palm card, and on that palm card was a plan, and that plan was about economic, the quality of life, and about leadership. And effectively, I've lived up to those promises over the last two years, and I'll continue to do so for our residents. And I want to leave you with the message that I'm always open, I'm always fair, and I listen to our residents and our businesses. So, if you ever have a concern but also a suggestion, I want to work together. And I echo what New Council President Valori had mentioned, also our mayor and administration. You know, I'm looking forward to working with everyone, you know, very cordially. I like to work with everybody, as I've done in the past professionally, and continue to make great strides in Precipity. So, you know, thank you for the confidence, and I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Next, we have the committee boards, and what I'm going to do is go through the list of who I'm hoping they would take those appointments on those boards. And Loretta, you are, Mrs. Grignani, you're right out of the box here. Would you mind taking the Board of Education as the council liaison?
Yes.
Thank you very much. For Craftman Farms, Mr. DePiero, would you mind taking that position up there?
No, I don't mind.
Thank you. And for the Economic Development Advisory Committee, I know, Rob, you've been on that in the past, so I would still like you to maintain that.
Absolutely. I look forward to it.
And I'm not sure who you want on that committee. I would let you obviously make that decision.
Sure. You know, in Economic Development Advisory Committee, one thing that I'm very confident about is, you know, providing leadership to these organizations and these committees, and I allowed them to have a discussion about who they'd like to have on their committees. The Economic Development Committee, they would like to reappoint for a two-year term Eric Sequin. Also, reappoint for a two-year member term Raviam Metapati, and also for another two-year term Ganesh Perswad.
And you'll make sure you'll get those proper spelling down to the...
Yes.
Do you want to do a roll call on that?
Do a roll call on it, please.
Okay, yes, we'll do a roll call on that for those three appointments.
Okay. Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Concerning the Emergency Service Council, Mr. Corrifi, if you would take that position?
Yes.
Thank you. For the Environmental Advisory Committee, I have Robert Paluso. Mr. Paluso, would you take that position?
I'd be honored to contain, yes.
Great, thank you. I'm going through all these different sheets here at the same time. In regards to the Fire Prevention Bureau, Paul, would you continue being on that?
Yes.
Particular... Okay, great. The Historical Preservation Advisory Committee, Mr. Paluso, would you continue on that?
Yes, again, I'd be honored, but I have some appointees. I'd like to make a motion for a three-year term member to reappoint Barbara Seaman, and also for a member for three years, Sharif Shahshuwwain. Both of them, I'd like to make a motion to appoint.
Okay, great. Can we do a roll call on those appointments?
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Greg Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. In regards to the Library Board of Trustees, Loretta, would you mind taking that position?
I'd be honored, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Loretta, since you're there, would you mind taking the Morris County League of Municipalities?
Yes, sir.
That's great, right out of the box here. And in regards to the Municipal Alliance Committee, Mr. DePiero, would you mind taking that position? That would be a new position for you, Municipal Alliance Committee.
Okay.
Want the best on there. Thank you. Great. In regards to the Municipal Government Transparency Committee, I was going to still remain on that, and we have some great things ahead to work with the staff, and I think the folks that I had assigned through the past, they still have an interest, and they'll have a lot more involvement with this particularly committee. So, the folks that I had on there in the past and are still interested is Pat Patacha. The next person would be Dave Kaplan. The third person would be Nancy Snyder. The fourth individual would be Tom Waika, and the fifth individual would be Adriana Alfonso, and these are all one-year terms, so I'd like to do a roll call on that.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. In regards to the... Let me see where I'm at here. The Open Space Committee, Mike, would you still want to remain on that?
Yes.
Great. The Precipity Area Chamber of Commerce, Rob?
Yes, I'd be happy to continue. That's actually, I just want to clarify for the public, it's a representative position, and it's a nonprofit group that reports and helps with economic development. Thank you.
Great. The Precipity Child Daycare Center, Loretta, would you mind taking that?
I'd be honored, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Concerning the Planning Board, I will remain still on that position. In regards to the Police Athletically, Paul, were you interested in that position?
Yes, I'll take it.
Okay, great. The Recreation Advisory Committee, were you interested in the position also, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, there's a three-year term that has expired. It's Mr. Frank Neglia's position. I'd like to nominate him, to reappoint him for that.
Okay, great. Can we do a roll call on that?
Well, you have two.
There are two vacancies.
Oh, I only see one here.
Yeah, it's one, it's one.
There are two vacancies on there.
Which one?
Is it two or is it one?
Well, we have Mayor.
The other one is Donna Gauss. She's up for reappointment.
All right, so this is a type one here? There's supposed to be two? I only see one.
There's only one on this sheet, but I believe there's...
All right. Should we take the one now and then wait until next week?
Yeah, we'll confirm the other one.
Confirm it.
Okay.
So for this three-year term, Frank Neglia?
Okay, great. Can you do a roll call on that?
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Greg Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. And Mike Wolf do a follow-up on that other position. Thank you for looking out there. The Traffic Advisory Committee, Paul, would you take that?
Yes. Great. Also, we have two terms that have expired. I'd like to nominate and reappoint the members that were on there. The first person would be Mr. Nick Cerbo, and the second would be George Terry.
Great. Can you do a roll call on that?
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Greg Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. And for the Zoning Board of Adjustments, we have three positions that are available. They're all four-year terms. The first four-year unexpired term ends 12/31/16. And if we have any nominations here?
Before we nominate, I just want to thank Loretta Grignani for her service, you know, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
I would nominate Davey Willens.
Second.
For which?
Four-year...
Well, the Council President announced the unexpired term.
That four-year term's one year left.
Yeah, okay.
You want to do it a different way?
Yeah, I had three individuals I was going to put up, so we have no confusion there. I was going...
Well, you got to do them one at a time.
One at a time. So, you want to do the first appointment, or the first...
All right.
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion for this position.
Yes, we have a motion for a four-year unexpired term.
Okay, I'd like...
1/16.
I'd like to nominate Ada.
You have a motion and a second for the first person.
He already did one.
Well, he said that he was going to...
Pull it back.
Pull it back. We're going to go through it again.
Okay.
In regards to...
No. I'll second that.
Okay, so that would be Ada Vistika for the...
Could you just clarify for me what your intent is here before I pull this back? In other words, I want Davey to be appointed.
No, he's going to be appointed.
But there's only three positions open.
No, there'll be another one.
There'll be another one?
Yes.
All right, okay.
I seconded that one.
Okay, so roll call.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Greg Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Dave Kaplan, who is currently an alternate on there to the four-year term that expires 12/31/19.
Second.
Oh, yes, a motion by Mr. Corrifi, second by Mrs. Grignani. Roll call.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
We have a member of four-year term. There's a reappointment on there as well. I don't see it on the sheet, but I seen it on one of my other sheets here. There's a reappointment. Am I correct? Ellen?
The term ended. The term ended.
Term ended, so we'd like to reappoint.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a reappointment.
Reappointment. Nancy Snyder, I'd like to reappoint.
I'll second that.
And that's for the four-year term.
Yes. Roll call, that would be a motion by Mr. Paluso and second by myself. Roll call.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mrs. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Council President, there's now another opportunity since we have a reappointment.
And at that time...
So now we have an alternate position, and I believe the name of...
Davey Williams.
Davey Williams came in.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Roll call. Roll call, oh, excuse me. That was a motion by Mr. Paluso, second by Mrs. Gragnani. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. I appreciate your patience. Sorry about the confusion here, if there's...
There's a lot, there's so many...
There's a lot here. Yes. Okay. In regards to...
Resolutions?
Yes. Okay, the following is the resolutions. Mr. DiPiero, can you read off Resolution 2016-001?
Just so it's noted, I believe the copies that were handed out may say 2015 on them. That's just a typo. It's really 2016 dash, and then the following number.
Okay, we're going to read these by title only, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2016 dash 001 Temporary Budget. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Roll call?
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, second by Councilman Paluso. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 002, Mr. Paluso.
Cash Management Plan. Motion to approve above resolution.
Second, Gragnani.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mrs. Gragnani. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso. Uh, Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 003, Mr. Karifi.
Designation of Official Newspaper. Motion to approve, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 004, Mrs. Gragnani.
Designation of Newspapers to Receive Notices. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gragnani, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 005, Mr. DiPiero.
Resolution 2016 dash 005, authorizing a township assessor to take certain actions to prosecute and defend tax appeals. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 006, Mr. Paluso.
Granting fee exemptions in connection with permits for construction, zoning, engineering, fire prevention, health, parks and forestry, and recreation departments. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 007, Mr. Karifi.
Authorizing payment of full salary to all township employees who have been called to active duty.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 008, Mrs. Gragnani.
Designating an employee to serve as public agency compliance officer. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gragnani, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 009, Mr. DiPiero.
Authorizing the township tax collector to charge a penalty on delinquent taxes, assessments, or other municipal liens or charges.
Second.
Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 010, Mr. Paluso.
Authorizing the township tax collector to charge interest on delinquent taxes, assessments, or other municipal liens or charges. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Resolution 2016 dash 11, Mr. Karifi.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, confirming to the appointment of Gerald P. Scala as Municipal Court Judge.
Get ready, because you're going to get... Second, Gragnani.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mrs. Gragnani. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Resolution 2016 dash 012, Mrs. Gragnani.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, confirming the appointment of the Director of the Department of Human Services.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gragnani, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
I just want to say before I vote on it is that I, I met Mrs. Piccone, and she's a lovely person to work with. She's done a lot of good things down at Human Services, so I vote yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes, and welcome.
Um, one of the things we're going to do more often is that, um, we, like the council and the mayor that gets sworn in, we too know that this is a sacred trust, and we want to, we want to put our hand on the Bible. So, Michelle, you're starting a new kind of concept.
Yep.
I'd like your husband and your son to come up. And I think there's a former director out there. I think she can use all the help. Come on up, Barbara.
Come on, Barbara.
Barbara.
Let's go.
Barbara. It's a family affair.
I think I was going to get a new mic.
That'll be in the budget.
Alright, you ready? I'll have your husband hold it. Place your right hand on the Bible. Oh, your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand.
It's all in the test.
I'll do it this way here. Ready? Repeat after me. I state your name.
Michelle Piccone.
To solemnly swear...
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I'll support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will be in true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the same.
To the same.
And to the governments...
And to the government.
...established in...
Established in.
...the United States...
The United States.
...and in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will...
That I will.
And partially...
And partially.
...and justly...
And justly.
...form...
Perform.
...all the duties...
All the duties.
...of the office of...
The office of...
...Director of Human Resources.
Director of Human Resources.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're official now.
Thank you.
Get to work.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we'll, and I wouldn't give that to, we, we'll get a nicer sheet. I just, that, that one has a cross out on it, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Ellie, come on, high standards here.
High standards. That was, that was, that was Nora and I last-minute standard, so, um, yeah, that, yeah, yeah. Well, you, you might want to treasure that, then. That's my scribble, so, you know, that might go, you, you might sell that on eBay. You might make some money.
No, we'll, we'll split this later on. Take care of me.
Council President, before we continue, I, I know Barbara, you, you didn't come up for the picture, but I'd like to personally thank Barbara Iaboli for all of her efforts and the prior capacity for Director of Human Services. You did a tremendous job for our community for a number of years, and helping our flood victims, to helping our seniors. And, you know, bless you for everything you've done, and wish you good luck in retirement as well. Thank you so much.
I, I might add, Barbara, I mean, I, I probably, many people have said, you, you look a lot younger than you did the day you left. I don't know what that is. It must have something to do...
I think she got on the job when she was like ten. Yes.
I think so.
Thank you for appointing yourself.
I don't think I had a choice. I was, um, I was, I'm going to tell you the story real quick.
Here you go.
I was at St. Anne's Christmas party, and this little Italian man, Mr. Prisco, he loves you. Goes, "Mayor, do me a favor." And I got a little nervous when he did it that way. Now, you do a great job, Michelle. You know, I get to work with you, so, God bless you, and I wish you the best.
Good luck.
And, and back at you, Barbara. She had a very good mentor, and, and you were that person. And one thing that, because we, we're, we're going to be talking about, we're going to be talking more and more about, you know, family and things that happen. One of the dreams that Barbara had to make that community center, the community center that it was, is, she told me a story one time, that when she was in college, best years of her life, about, you know, getting together and breaking bread and eating and playing games and maybe going to class now and again. I'm going to get there, Barbara. I don't forget the most important part. And her dream came true, and that's what, what occurs over there. The only thing she wants to make sure is that somehow they get a liquor license so that they can have a cake party now and again, and raise, raise a glass and enjoy, enjoy life. So, that was a tribute to you, because I looked with envy from across my Denville days and said, yeah, that's a special place, that community center. And, and it was special because you made it special. Thank you.
Ellie, are you done?
I'm, I'm done now.
Okay, great.
I told you, my uncle wouldn't even let me kiss the Barney Stone. So, it said, "Stop, enough already." I'm done. I'm done.
She had too much candy before.
Yeah, there is a bite missing from that.
Yes, I knew it, right? I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Gragnani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
That came quick. Good evening, everybody. Roy Nelson, Maton Drummond Drive. I know Ellen and Anne probably haven't heard this before, but every year I gave a, wrote a letter to Santa Claus, but what I wished for, because I was always been a good boy, never came true. So, I figured I'd do it differently this year. I'd start off with a wish list for 2016. But before I get to that, I want to tell you something about Kyle, who was with me last week at the meeting. So, I said to Kyle as we left the building, and I got to go fast, because I got to do, I said, "What did you learn at the meeting?" He goes, "Roy, I couldn't hear anything." Okay? There's a lot of us. You can't hear in the back. I don't care if it's the Board of Adjustments, the Planning Board, any other meetings here. We got to do something about this. Can you hear me back there now? Okay. So, we got to do something about the microphone. That hurt me. Next thing, I'm glad to see that Katie Cassidy showed up, because I think a couple of meetings ago, she did an excellent job, which she laid out. Now, with that said, I was, I was always raised with one of the mantras, was the environment does not belong to us, belongs to future generations yet unborn. And I know I've lived by that very well. A person like Nick does homiak, does also, because I can tell you what this man, that man does every day. But going back to Katie, she did an excellent job, and her associates here that night. But there is a little bit of truth, though, when Jerry Manning came up here, because we really don't know what's causing all this in the environment. If you know history, if you're, if you're well-read, you know, the trees can tell you what the environment's been like. And don't know whether the sun's tilted a little bit differently or whatever, but man, human beings are contributing to the pollution, obviously, and there's a lot that, that we have to do. I'd like to see the mayor or the environmental committee call Katie in to give some more talks and to make recommendations to this town, because let's, let's bring the pride to Precipiny and the place to be. I don't care which saying you want to use. Well, here's my wish list. I hate to say ten, because I really went past that, but, and, and it's not in the order, they're all very important. Let's lick the big wounds and scars, and let's stop the witch hunt and let the cards fall where they will. Number nine, I brought my dog's, uh, dog, dog tag. She really would like to see. Here you go.
She's always entertaining.
She always, she really does want to see licensing of cats, because I think she will go to the, uh, the, the appropriate legal chambers and, and continue that. Because what you all should do up there, council, is go to the animal shelter, how many cats we take in, and how many, how much it costs us versus the dogs. Dogs aren't costing us much, but the cats are, and we're not getting any fees. And I know that the Township Clerk's Office can handle that. You brought up tonight, and Mike DiPiero will know I bring this up almost every year, extend military reservist call to action, to, to duty, a real estate tax break, and ask the state to reimburse us, because a town like this has a lot more reservists than most other towns. I'm sure there's maybe one in Mountain Lakes, maybe one in Summit. than most other towns. I'm sure there's maybe one in Mountain Lakes, maybe one in Summit. But really should, they really should be taken care of, those men and women. As you know, Lou, you were taken care of when you were called to duty. I think it's only fair and you were a township employee and I've been very vocal like this and Henry Luther was on my side, but he wouldn't get up to the mic and say it. Petition the state to reimburse towns, all towns with group homes for the real estate taxes. We're getting more and more of these in this town. Town again like Mountain Lakes probably doesn't have one. Six, clean up the town, the home property deterioration. Ellen went out on a snowy Saturday, saw what I was talking about, and there's many, many more. The litter is out of control in this town. How about a town slap program? Work with the courts. A physical test as the Marines give. When I was in high school, you strove for gold all the way down and you didn't want to wear gray. I don't have much time, I can't go into detail with it, mayor, but I'd love, that's one of the reasons why I called you, I wanted to talk to you about that. Start off 2016. Four, change the cardboard to the day, the recycling date for each section and work with the financial deal with the One Stream Company. They're making a ton of money on our cardboard because we're not collecting enough because people are putting it out on the Monday or Tuesday, whatever day it is.
Roy, one minute.
Yeah, okay, oh shoot. Tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I love that line from the Three Stooges when the judge goes to Curly, raise your right hand, repeat after me, "Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?" And Curly goes, "But, Your Honor, if I tell the truth, you'll certainly send me to jail." I really do want the truth all the time and so does everybody else behind me. Petition the state to change the taxation for apartment formulation.
Thirty seconds.
And you must, you must make the necessary change for the garbage that we're picking up. That's it? I'm up?
No, you have thirty seconds.
Oh, thirty seconds.
Down to twenty-five seconds.
Any successful company, any successful organization, any successful nonprofit organization have to, they have to go with the monitor COCK. Common sense, organization, communication, and consideration for their employees. Yes, it starts with the C, but you know why I use C-O-C-K. The thing that you did here, and I've been very vocal about it, with the blue collar workers, it's about time that they kind of part, I'm, time is up. You know I always follow the rules, but I've got a lot more to go over.
Roy, thank you for all your efforts.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for recognizing that.
Anybody else come forward? Please state your name.
Yes.
Where you live.
Richard Rosenthal. I no longer live in Morris Plains. I live in Greystone Park. I got a Baylor from, uh, from one of the great cruise lines, Crystal Cruise Lines, and they listed me as Greystone Park. I went to look on MapQuest to get instructions. I no longer live in Morris Plains, I live in Greystone Park. Now, that's gotta be a great thrill for Craftsman Farms, we're now in Greystone Park through that. And I really think it's a shame, about the time we did something about that, to go back again. But what I'm really here for today. I'm gonna pass you a card. It's all it is. It's a dot. Here, pass it down.
Did you give one to Mr. Inglisino over there?
Well, that's it. There's nothing more than that.
Okay, so, you know, I figured I'll analyze it.
I recently finished reading a book called Tom's River by Tom Fagin on the Pulitzer Prize describing pollution that occurred in the water supply of Tom's River. And with that, I went back and several years ago, I came before the town council and I said to them that the water supply was high in volatile organisms, not organisms, volatile chemicals through that. And a few weeks later, they had the head of the water department come in and with that, they said to me, "You know, that's only one part. It's a penny in ten thousand and it seemed like a little amount." And I agreed with that and I left. Well, for tonight, I wanted to see what the water said. So I went online and I copied out our water report. And this I didn't know. But the, one of the things at the end, it said, "Important information about your drinking water. Monitoring requirements not met for the Precipiny Troy Hills water system." Apparently, they didn't monitor one of the wells. My feeling is, this is what you do for a living. You blow a statue, you got a problem. Why wasn't the water checked? That's what they did for a living. Now, I'm sure somebody will come forward and give us a hearty apology, a sincere, and it's not for you guys to do this, will get a sincere apology, but why wasn't the water well-checked? That's what you do for a living. That's what should be standing through this. The other thing, and now I am going to go back to it again, in looking at the water, again, looking at the, looking at the water, we are high again. And I don't know what high means. What is the percentage? It used to be, when they did, it was one in a million, but when you read this book, it was parts per billion. Now, when I passed out this little card with a dot on it, I got, two years ago, three years ago, I got bit by a tick. That dot in there is the size of a tick. Less than that, the portion that entered my body was smaller than that. And I suffered severe illness for a couple of years until I realized what it is. So if they're gonna tell me it's one part in a million, look at that little dot, compare it to your body. If you've gone through Lyme disease, you know exactly what I went through. I'll ask you another question. What does a flu virus weigh? When you come down with the flu, you're not getting a drop, you're not drinking something, it's airborne, it comes in the air. So when you're telling me something is one part per million, I have a cup of coffee every morning. I have a second cup of coffee and later on, I may even have another cup of coffee. We have soup, water is added, other thing is watered. So it's not a question of once a day, it's four, it's five. Now, look at my weight and look at a young child drinking water every day. I think we have a right to know what the high number is. Now, this says it's acceptable. What is the number that's acceptable? Where is the high number that acceptable?
One minute, sir.
This is what I would like to know, what these numbers are, what is the percentage, and are we being affected at any degree? Are children being affected at any degree? And look at that little dot, and that's my little tick mark that caused this illness.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Nick, I see you're gonna come forward.
Yeah, in response to that, one of the things that councilman, Council President Valori has stated is that we're going to have reports by all the utilities. This will be added to the report that I will be getting from the water department and it will be presented on the 19th. It'll be presented to the council prior to that, but, and those questions will be answered.
Great. Thank you, Ellen. These are all the things that we want to do, bring out to the public.
Uh, Nick Komiac, Blake Hiawatha. I agree with Roy about the cats, they're all over the place. The next habitat loss, the songbirds, the demise of songbirds or cats. And we got them, we got them all over the place. We got plenty of garbage, that new ordinance up there in North Beverwick is not being enforced. If I could look in the garbage can, find household garbage with somebody's address, so can the inspector, so can the police, none of it's being done. I have a paper here, I typed up at the library today, it's contradictions about your water supply, about Precipiny does and doesn't have enough water and the state being in water deficit. I'm gonna leave it for you, but we do have a goal, number 10, in our master plan to protect and conserve the water supply, but in my opinion, from two recent things that have just happened, the UPS and the Water View landscape, if you use your land use capability maps, you realize that's groundwater recharge. You don't protect your groundwater recharge, you don't protect your aquifer. So I'll leave it at that. The other thing, I'm very upset about this special meeting that happened on the 24th of November. And here, and we came out and we had the ordinance 2015-26, which was the rezone of, of Water View to an RC district. It was called a minor change in our master plan by Mr. Schnikes. It's not a minor plan, but the upsetting thing about it, it didn't have to be done in an emergency setting. And I believe that the people in this town have a right to determine and to be involved with our housing obligation and the manner in which it is satisfied. And from the day that the mayor said that he would have that land for open space, Precipiny had a lot of high cards. I believe Mr. Inglisino, we even referred to it, said he had a royal flush. And if you would have examined everything we had before us.
Two minutes, Nick.
All right, the criteria, there's no way that that landscape would fell to public housing. And there was some collusion with RD and it all happened in closed session. I think that's very unfair to the public. And the main reason is, our master plan, it's not a minor change in our master plan, goals and objectives, it's a major change. And we even have a separate goal for retail areas. So if you look at the master plan, I'm not gonna waste my time reading it all, but we're not defending our, our way of life here in Precipiny according to our own master plan. And every time one of these developers come to town, our master plan changes with the developer. It's like it has no integrity whatsoever. And it shouldn't happen in closed session. There was no reason for that to happen in closed session other than the lawsuit. But the lawsuit, it went, it went further than that. It went to a change in our master plan. And like I said, we're not guarding what we say we are about in our master plan. And that's not right. And perhaps we're having too many closed sessions. But the oath, under the authority of the people, well, the people won. Imagine if we put all our resources together, the $50,000 that the citizens spent, the money we spent on Mr. Inglisino, we put that all together.
Thirty seconds, Nick.
We would have had it. We would have had the 26 acres for open space. And don't think that we wouldn't. And it's very disappointing, the whole, the whole episode. That's all I can say.
God bless you. God bless you. And thank you, Nick, for your time.
Just for your information, I don't know if we have any time left. The best forested landscapes in New Jersey received, they're the best recharge areas between 45 and 50 inches of rain a year. Best case scenario, best recharge, only 16 to 24 inches of that rain goes back into the ground. So Precipiny keeps on paving over those recharge areas. Her non-forced, who knows what's gonna come out, like Rich says.
Thank you very much, sir.
Right, I'll leave you with the papers and you could, you could read the whole thing if you want, but the information is highlighted for you.
Did you get the opportunity to sign in?
Uh, no.
Agreed.
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Congratulations, Lou, welcome. All right.
Thank you, Pat.
Um, first, I just have a few questions. Couple of months ago, I think it was, Mr. Krefi had put in a thing regarding, resolution regarding a responsible bidder that was supposed to be looked into further by the attorney. Do we have any status on that? Has the council received anything regarding Mayor Barbario's communication with Devine? He said he had been back and forth and should have a response by now. I hope we can get this settled. Mr. Valori, did you get an answer to your question regarding the apartment head in London?
Oh, no, I, no, I haven't.
Uh, try this one again, the sewer utility. Has that investigation been completed? Okay. Are the resolutions on the website, we still haven't gotten them from the 12/29 meeting. I thought they'd be here tonight. But are they on the website so that we can print them out or whatever?
Are they? I'm asking Nora.
Nora doesn't really know, I don't, I'm not.
I'm unsure as to whether or not they are on the website yet.
But.
We'll make sure that they are.
Well, it's just a matter of, I'd like to get them, I don't, if they're not, you know, no big deal, but.
No, no, I want to make sure they're on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And the last one is Mayor Barbario. Well, your office has been called a couple of times regarding the Bank of America on Hawkins Avenue with the construction crews working. And we've been dismayed at the parking of the workers. And I know we've called in and I know something's been done. I know the cops had been up there, but what you have is two sides, okay? It's not, it's a wide road, but not that wide. It's not as wide as others in the area. Now, in the first time, they were parking on the right-hand side. And there's like 20 cars or so. And first of all, they're blocking a hydrant, plus they're going all the way up to the stop sign. So anybody coming off of North Beverwick is not having a, cutting over, okay? Now, they so kindly moved to this side of the street now, okay? Which is fine, but again, they're still parking all the way up at the corner. If somebody's coming in off of North Beverwick, we're still gonna have problems. We're just asking that they be considerate to the neighbors and, you know, and you know, there's a lot of cut through traffic, so something's bound to happen eventually.
Uh, Pat, you reminded me, have the buses still been going down your block?
I haven't been told of any more.
Okay.
But I did see a Miller Lite truck pass by.
Well.
I'm getting really discouraged with my area.
I don't know whether I can do the.
I'm getting really discouraged. Yeah, that just seems to be an open wound now. Anybody just drives through.
No, no, I, yeah, because I wanted to know if there was some relief on that. And I'll verify that they've been monitoring that.
Okay.
But you haven't seen or heard any buses from anybody.
Yes, and in regards to the North Beverwick being redone, I would really like to, one day, Ellen, me and you, get together and I would like you to come up to this area so I can show you and get an idea of exactly what is happening before that work is done because it really needs to be really thought out.
As you know, I do go out on field trips.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Pat, as far as the responsible bidder resolution, I know Mr. Inglisino advised me at our last meeting that he was still doing some research and was gonna get back to me on that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we have, we're ready to sit down and talk to you. We had it done right before the holidays, the holidays, but I have a whole spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's okay, as long as it's acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Seems that we have one more come forward.
Nancy Snyder, 226 North Beverick Road. Ms. Sandman, I left two messages, no return phone call.
Can you tell me who you left those messages with?
Yeah, physically, as I saw the mayor on both visits. Woman that sits in the front.
Okay, I did not.
That's okay. So I too want to be part of that North Beverick visit. Kinda concerned, I'm concerned about the lack of plans for the curbing that will support paving project. We have makeshift asphalt curbing in front of 62 or nearby thereabouts. And one of the things that I do not want to see, and I'm sure I represent all the property owners up and down that stretch, is we do not want to see a quilted patchwork of curbing that is horrifically, you know, that looks horrific and is not aesthetically pleasing. Veil guard curbing everywhere that's been paved, secondary, tertiary roads got some type of curbing, whether it was the block or the actual curbing itself. So I'm gonna be included on that.
Absolutely.
And second, I'd like to go over with you some email, this, one email that we got, the traffic committee, that I thought was quite unprofessional from one of the employees. And we'll go over that later.
Um, okay. I will, I will give you a call. What time is a good time to call you?
Anytime.
Okay, thank you. I will give you a call tomorrow. Because I wanna set up, it's good to have a conversation.
Also.
Emails do not.
Regarding Bank of America. So pedestrians can severely hurt themselves on the side, forgive me, I got a little cold here, on the side. So that's North Beverick proceeding to 46 on the right-hand side. The actual work fence does not meet up with the curb and it's almost, it's almost like a mini covert where people are gonna twist ankles or worse. For some reason, that fence leans and it's, it's a ditch, it's a long ditch. So if that could be rectified too, that'll be great. Thank you.
And Ellen, if you can, if you could just maybe CC me or give me a call.
Absolutely.
Because that's a very busy area where that bank's going in.
Yeah, no, it will be addressed.
I appreciate it. See, one more's coming forward.
Hi, Katie Cassidy, 7 Stephen Terrace in Precipiny. Hey, everybody. I wanted to thank Roy real quick for his nice words. I'm totally down to talk to the environmental committee at any point. I didn't realize this until it started freezing, but I just want to talk about, I live right off Druid Hill and Druid Hill Drive has a little bit of a draining issue for what, Dad, it's probably like three or four years now. The water has, like, it kinda puddles around the corners and like I mentioned last time I was here, you know, I can't really walk around the block on my sidewalk, so I have to get off on the street. And when I'm staying as close to the curb as possible, there's ice. And so clearly there's an issue with the draining because it can't drain before it freezes. And then it's gotten to the point where it actually negatively impacts the asphalt. So there's potholes coming from this as well. That, so I just, it's getting cold and the weather's probably gonna get worse, so I figured I'd mention it now. And congratulations.
Thank you. And I appreciate your involvement in the community and bring this to our attention. This is only gonna obviously help the folks that live over there too.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's Dad? Dad's back there somewhere? Dad, where are you? Dad, you should be very impressed and very proud of your daughter. She's a very good speaker and she presents herself very well.
Thank you. And since no one else is coming forward, I'd like to recognize some of the elected officials that are here right now. And I have to start with actually our former council members. And that would be our, our Morris County Clerk, that would be Ann Grassi, in the back there. Our formal council, I'd be president, councilman, and one of our deputy directors over the county, and that would be Mr. John Cesaro. And I see we also have one of our other elected officials, he's a county freeholder, and that'd be Doug Cabana. I'm definitely realizing I need glasses. Is there anybody else out there that I'm missing?
Mr. Nelson.
Oh, our former council member, Mr. Nelson.
Oh, and Brian Stan.
Oh, Brian, I didn't see you sitting back there. And our former council member, Brian Stan.
He's at the height again.
I told, I need glasses, I'm saying. Adam was flexing, Adam was flexing back there, he's blocking them.
Also, former councilman, Vinnie Ferraris there.
Oh, Vinnie, I apologize. Okay, I see no one else is coming forward. I'd like to make a motion to close this part of the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Notice.
Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
First motion to a second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
That's the next. This is the reorg meeting. Actually, we have another meeting after this.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. We take like a five minute break?
Five minute break.
All right, listen up everyone, we're gonna take a five minute break and then we'll come back with our regular agenda meeting. This was just reorganization. Thank you. I have to sound official here. The meeting will be called to order. Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Township Council, agenda meeting, January 5th, 2016. Meeting called to order by Council President Valori and that will be at nine, or no, excuse me, 8:50. You can see I need glasses. And we're gonna start with the flag salute.
Okay.
Mr. Krefi?
Flag to laze.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nora, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Here.
Mr. DiPiero?
Here.
Mrs. Graniani?
Here.
Mr. Paluso?
Present.
Mr. Valori?
Here. Other presence, Mayor James R. Barbario, also Ellen M. Sandman, business administrator, along with John Inglisino Esquire, township attorney, and Mrs. Ann Cucci, CFO, and Nora Jolie are our registered clerk. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular township council meeting of January 19th, whoop, correction here, of January 19th, 2016. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by following the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board of the municipal building on December 17, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 22nd, 2015, and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 24, 2015, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 17th, 2015. No council meetings are videotaped and aired on cablevision, public access channel 21, at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.precipiny.net.
Ordinances, second readings and public hearings, none. Status of the adopted ordinances. Resolution 2015 colon 29 was adopted on 12/29/15. The mayoral action was 12/29/15 and the effective date was 1/18/2016. Discussion reminders. Mayor, Ellen, anything that you wanted to put out? CFO?
Not, not, not necessary at this time.
Are you sure? Are you tired over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Scheduled meetings, 1/19/16 will be at 7:30. That will be our regular meeting. Next meeting will be February 2nd, 2016, 7:30 PM. That will be our agenda meeting. Minutes for approval are none. Administration, bids taken on 12/18/15, that will be with the ambulance driver behavioral modification driving event recording system for EMS. To be taken, none. Quotations, proposals and qualifications received, none, and requested, none. Ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance 2015 colon 24 entitled an ordinance establishing white collar salary range for the township Precipiny Troy Hills. Anybody have any question concerns on anything that I've read off here?
Um, I, just to give you some information, we're hiring a full, a full-time nurse and we just wanted to be in accordance with the salary ordinance and that's why we're doing that, that, that salary to be set so that we don't get into any, any concerns or any issues. That had happened a couple of years ago where the salary ordinances, ranges did not, did not meet the proper rigor and now we're going.
And just for, you know, clarification, what would that individual be doing in the town? You know, hiring?
Would be the, well, you may.
Now, that's interesting, so I don't think.
Well, yeah, no, it's, and again, it's, it would be the full-time nurse. In fact, this individual who we're gonna hire was someone that was, came in second to Michelle as far as to be appointed the community service person. So she will be doing the nursing, which we only have a part-time nurse now and the demands of that nurse are tremendous to go out into the community.
Oh, great.
And be with people. The thing is, she will add, add another, an added factor that she's someone that's of the community, loves the community, and will be working, when she's not out on assignment for the individuals, be working closely with Michelle.
All right, great.
So it's a, it's a great benefit and she's looking forward to doing more than just her nursing role. And we're happy for that. So we're getting a very good individual.
What's her name and salary as well?
Um, Mayor, you wanna? Mayor, you want to?
Her name is, I forget her last name, my God, it's Mary Ann Cucciara. And her salary is, what is it, 70,000?
I think it's 80.
Eight, no, eight, no, 70, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, 70, I'm sorry.
70,000.
That's right, I'm sorry.
I will say this to our Council President, she's going to be an asset to the community because she's going to be working within the community center and most of the senior citizens over there know her.
Oh, that's great.
And her mom worked, didn't her mother?
Yeah, mom was Rockaway Neck, you know, volunteer.
And when she's hired on board, can you bring her in so we can actually meet her?
Absolutely, yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great, yeah.
Is she an RN as well?
She what?
Yes, oh, yes.
Or BSN?
Yep.
No, she's a nurse, she's an RN, full flit.
Is she a BSN or a?
Oh, I don't know if she's a BSN.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I should, you know what, that's one thing with all the things, we should have had, well, you know what, we'll have it on the meeting of the 19th.
Great.
I'm going with acronyms anyway.
Oh, yeah, with acronyms, yes. Okay, thank you. Anything else from the administration?
And again, this is just for the change in the salary, and so we'll, you know, we'll have it come out on the 19th.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
I think that'd be nice.
Yeah, I think that would be. Okay, what we have here is next is the resolutions and on all these resolutions, there's going to need to be four that we're going to have to vote on tonight because they're vital to the integrity of the town, because that deals with our legal system, with the public defenders and with the prosecutors. The rest of those resolutions, we're going to obviously vote on our next council meeting. So right now, in the meantime, so we don't have to hold these folks up, I'd like to put these four positions forward so we can vote on them tonight, so then we're legally meet our qualifications of what we have to do to operate, you know, the legal aspect of government here. So the first resolution would be dealing with Matthew W. Young Esquire. So Mr. De Piero, if you could read off that resolution and we'll vote on it tonight, that'd be the second one down.
Before they're read, we do need a resolution number. Can one be assigned for each one?
Nora?
They can assign it later.
Yeah, they can, they can agree with Mr. De Piero, they can sign it later.
They can be assigned later?
Yeah, the operative is to.
Okay, as long as we're compliant.
So, yeah, Nora, so if you could put a little note, we'll get resolution numbers for that. Thank you, Mike.
Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment of Township Public Defender and awarding contract for professional services to Matthew W. Young Esquire of the firm Nuzzi &amp; Mason LLC for the year 2016.
Second. The motion made by Mr. De Piero, second by myself, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. The next would be, the next one down, I need for that resolution to be read by Mr. Karifi for Mr. Bach.
Before I read, I just had a, I have your resume here, I just wanted to see, your GPA was only, how come it was at a 4.0?
Yeah, yeah.
My first question, and the varsity football, was that a typo?
You have some competition up here, buddy, athletes here.
No, no.
Don't worry, his team's going to be worn out.
I don't, I gave out all the resumes. What was his Q?
Yes.
What was it?
Just slightly below 4.0. I don't know why it wasn't a 4.0.
Very disappointed.
It was close, they almost thought you weren't going to put you on for that.
I'm sure he's going to do a great job.
Yes, yes.
Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment of Township Public Defender and awarding contract for professional services to Joseph E. Bach Esquire for the year 2016.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. The next resolution, if Mr. Paluso, if you could read that.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations, Joe.
That would be concerning Mr. John Cesaro.
Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment of Township Municipal Prosecutor and awarding contract for professional services to John Cesaro Esquire, motion.
Second, Graniani.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mrs. Graniani, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
I have to abstain because I'm a county employee.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Mrs. Graniani, if you could read the next resolution concerning Mr. Cabana?
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment of Township Chief Municipal Prosecutor and awarding a contract for professional services to Douglas R. Cabana Esquire.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Graniani, second by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Again, I have to abstain.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Congratulations to both of you.
Congratulations to both of yous. Great. We have obviously several, well, multiple resolutions here. If everyone could take some time to look them over and again, these will be voted on our next council meeting. If you have any questions or concerns about those resolutions, please bring it to our attention now, so, you know, there's no surprises next council meeting or concerns.
And one of the things we've done, Council President, is that we have gone to more of a traditional way of doing the council meetings. Most towns do the first and third or the second and fourth and we've kind of gone now to the first and third, so there is that week period between so that we have time to answer any additional questions that any of the councilmen may have or the public for that matter.
Okay, great. In regards to resolutions, so we can make it sure and sweet, all in favor?
Just any questions?
Okay, just want to make sure there's no questions or concerns. All right, we'll move forward with the Township Office reports. The engineering report for January 2016, the Manor Lake Dam.
Okay, engineering report, January 2016, there's no council action required for any of the matters listed.
I think it's still important to read them because there is some, even though there's no action on our part, there is some progress that was made on some of those.
I'll read them off, okay, no, good point, I'll read them off. The NJDEP permit application reviewer has requested a few revisions and additional information. Our consultant, Cherry Weber, is reviewing the request and gathering the information. Once the permit has been issued, we will bid the project. No council actions required.
Council President, on this particular one, I just want to let you know, what we do in administration and also in concert with the mayor's office and the mayor's Action Bureau is we do a blast of information to all the people that have signed on to get the Manor Lake update.
Okay, good.
So it's good to read it into the record for those that might miss it, but we do send it out to numerous, over 20 people do receive
Oh, good.
the information and the update because they asked us to keep them in the loop and that's what we've been doing.
Oh, great.
But as Councilman De Piero was saying, it's nice to also say it for the rest of the public. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Karifi, could you read the?
FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Project, elevation work on phases four, five and six continues and the contractor will work until the weather prohibits construction. We are also in the process of acquiring two properties that were flooded during Hurricane Irene and are working on the FEMA and the Morris County Flood Mitigation Grant Documentation. No council action is required. Also, we have the Lake Persippany Dyke repairs, the construction of the Dyke repairs is almost complete. The contractor is finishing some minor cleanup work and should be done by the end of the month. No council action is required.
Right, and on that one, it's just a punch list item, so we're very happy and the community is very happy that that got completed and we worked with them because they had their fishing time and we were able to allow them to fish and then we went ahead and did the project, so.
Ellen, you're the best.
She was fishing.
She was fishing, I bet she was, I was going to ask you that next, okay.
So next week, next council meeting, there'll be another snicker bar waiting for you.
Great, better be larger than this one here, again, skimpy here.
I don't know if I can get in any of it.
All right, Chief Financial Officer, any good news?
Always good news. I think the mayor reported on most of our good news, but on the next, at the next council meeting, I'll be providing a summary report for you in advance.
Great.
And we can put it on here and go forward, go, I'm very excited about doing that.
That'll be great and, you know, it just makes everybody real update on everything because we all have busy lives and that'll be good for all of us.
That'll be provided before the meeting.
Yes, great, thank you.
And I think one of the things that that will also provide for, I mean, I'm very serious and so is Ann, this town should be and will be a AAA rated town.
Absolutely.
Okay? Double A is not Parsippany, triple A is Parsippany.
Thank you.
Ann can check this out, but my understanding over all these years, the reason we're double A and not triple A is that we don't, we've never chosen to keep the reserves you need.
High enough.
Enough money in reserves for triple A. And that's the reason we're not triple A, is my understanding.
Well, that may be one of the reasons. We do have a financial advisor that will help us to do that and we're hoping next year to go out and look at bonding, permanently financing some of our projects. With that will come a whole new review, a full review and a rating again, so we're talking about doing that in 2016.
You might want to find out how much we need in reserve.
Yeah, that would all be part of that project and as a matter of fact, one of the resolutions that's on there is for the Phoenix Advisors, not only do they do the Emma and all the compliance for us, but part of their job, hopefully, they'll work with us to do the bond rating in 2016.
Great, thank you for educating us there. Anything else?
That's it for me.
John, you've been very quiet tonight. Do you have anything for us?
No.
Great, wonderful, see, this is starting off good here. Outstanding.
No, sir.
Any Township Office Committee reports?
I got some comments. As far as the new committee members and the liaisons, thank you everybody for volunteering, but I'd like to ask Ellen if you can please direct Joe Plesch to update our website with all the new appointments and the new liaisons as well.
I think he was going to accomplish that today and yesterday, but his parents were sick.
And I saw him send out an email concerning that too.
And he wouldn't know him all until now anyhow, so.
Yeah, that's true too, but that was one of the reasons why he, you know, didn't get it done too.
Great, and also just a reminder to all the committee chairs that budgets are due, we're in a budgetary process now, so any budgets for committees, please submit them to your liaison who will submit them to the CFO. Thank you.
Great. Communications, correspondence, none. Great. Applications, we have a 2016 renewal of licenses, amusement game, entertainment, taxi, limo, tourist accommodations and truck terminal. Now we're going to move to the public hearing portion, motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Roy, I knew that you were going to rush her, right away up here to the mic.
Roy, you must have a tendril, which I want to just also say how much smarter Katie is than me, because I told her the meeting's over and then Paul came up and go, where are you going? There's another part to the meeting, so I'm the doom cuff. I asked Nick Comyak, his name, rank and serial number, sir, can you remember your serial number? He read it right off and he's been out a lot longer than you, but I'm only kidding, I'm wasting my time.
I'm good to go.
Okay, you can't find a one-door Ted. A continuation of the wish list, enforcement of the occupancy, I know Ann Grassi had just recently left, she had written some of the occupancy, and that hotel tax, we have not collected one penny in this town. Well, I'm going to report to the administration and the council and the attorney that there's another boarding house on Brooklawn, we got two on Brooklawn, they're like bookends, one at the end of 202, the other end of 53. It's getting out of hand in this town. We have well over 100. Next thing, we're talking about my wish list. You know, you guys, ladies and gentlemen, you run for office, John's run for office. Lot of people say, and I'm not the only one, we don't want to see you guys or women three or four months before the town, Mary or the general. You have 39 districts in this town, you're elected for four years, why don't you walk the neighborhoods in between? I recommend it to any of you up here, have a little pad in the back pocket like I have when I'm running or walking or I'm in the car and say, hey, you see a tree leaning, you see a storm drain that's a little stuffed up. Look, it's great exercise. I hate gyms, I don't go to a gym, I work outside. I have, you know, but, not asking you to do what I do because I gave a couple of guys heart attacks, but that's the truth, I'm not happy about that either. But the other thing, I'm going to keep going here, Fairview and IDA, I think what we should do here, is I don't care a committee or whatever, their fees are much higher than surrounding towns, what they charge us. I'm talking substantial, like 100% higher. Now, we all know why it's 100% higher because we know what's gone on. Reminder, I guess you already spoke to her, having Katie Cassidy on the Environmental Committee, I think she would be fantastic even if she comes in as a speaker. Also, as you, I'm just going to talk about November and December, the amount of memos I gave the administration and to the council, I have not gotten a response on one of them and I do want to cover a couple of them because what I will start doing, and I'm sure that Persippany Focus would allow me to put it under Roy's corner, I'll CC Persippany Focus, painting 25 miles an hour into our pavement. Other towns do that, because I'm telling you, from a legal standpoint, and I'm no attorney because I'll never be a parasite, that if you put it into this, if we had an accident, the first thing that attorney's going to say, you only have the signs up seven months of the year, what about the other five months? Other towns paint them in. Now supposedly, and I wanted a response from him, because when I tell my son no, I tell him why no, the triangles get destroyed, they don't last, they run over, I know you see them all in your neighborhoods, I'm not the only person with good eyes. If we paint them in, we're covered. We're covered for 12 months of the year except for some snow. I only got two minutes left.
Miss left?
Cute, I shouldn't stop making jokes. Thank you, Ellen, for bringing this back from League of Municipalities.
Yes.
I got to say this, it's garbage though.
Yeah, but I just wanted to.
I know, you did your job.
I did my job, I went there.
Can I pass this on to people?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Because I know it's public information. Regarding, you know, just read my memos, but one thing, I am not here to pat myself on the back because the family I come from has always said, there's no I in Germany, but I'm an American, not a German, just pointing to a German-American family, American-German family. I have to say, I did a great job with this, okay? This 2014 PTR now has, if you put an additional assessed value onto your house, meaning in addition, but I need you guys and this lady to work, this council to work with us, two other things have to be added on to this PTR. If you've got other person in the household contributing to income and if you, if you're a grandchild and I know, I'm not only means just the drugs, it could be other problems, grandparents bringing a child into their house and that child or children are going to our school system, they should not have their taxes frozen. Those two other things have to be added on to this and this is millions of dollars, if I may say, that I've saved as taxpayers of New Jersey. if I may say, that I've saved as taxpayers of New Jersey.
Thirty seconds, Roy.
That's it. I had more, but you know what, I'm getting tired too.
Thank you, sir.
I'm used to John talking a lot more, so I.
Roy, did you sign in?
Again?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
You're important.
What's your rank, name and surname?
We have our parachute now.
But I am not, have I ever been a member of the Communist Party? But I'm thinking about joining. What's going on with the tree replacement in the town? I noticed there was, in the master plan, there's this thing when the trees go down, and then they're supposed to be planted somewhere else.
Hopefully this will be in our report.
Yes.
And I was just wondering what's going on with that. And I noticed a thing here too, the governor's counsel on alcoholism and drug abuse, is it, would it be possible to pass an ordinance in this town or any town to ban them little liquor bottles? If you do a police call around the roads here, if you're cleaning up, they're all over the place, but it's, all you gotta do is stop in the store, you get a little liquor bottle, you go in and you flip it out the store. They're all over the road, so people must be drinking and driving, but is that some kind of interference in commerce or something that?
I mean, bottom line is, it's littering, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, the sale of the little bottle, it actually encourages drinking, and like I said, if you're out there and you're walking around, they're all over the place, people have to be drinking and driving, but.
Nick, is it hard liquor?
Yeah, it's, yes, Jack Daniels, rum, wine, they're all over the place, little vodka,